I'd like to call to order the council meeting for February 13th. And if the clerk could please read the roll.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Koss.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are eight members present at the quorum, and we are to the meditation and pleasure of allegiance.
Is there anyone that would like to remember someone during this? Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to say God bless and God speed to First Lieutenant Jean Bearup, who passed away on January 27th. And her story was in the State Journal edition last Thursday. And she passed away at the young age of 102. In December, the mayor and I participated in the wreath across America ceremony where we were laying wreaths across the graves of our veterans, our fallen soldiers and heroes. And she was there at 102 to celebrate that. Jean retired as a First Lieutenant in the Army, serving as a nurse during World War II, spending over a year in Europe, working to keep our brave soldiers alive. And, you know, it was a time where, you know, there were very few women in the military. She's also was very instrumental in being a volunteer with international students at Michigan State, or her son there was the coordinator there. But I wanted to just take a moment to pause and recognize a life well-lived and a great public servant. She gave her all for our country, and she was a hero. And so I would like to just, during our moment of meditation, just think of Jean. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Bearup, sorry.
Is there anyone else? It's time if we could rise. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have for your approval the council proceedings of January 7th and January 23rd. January 9th.
Thank you. Vice President Garza.
Thank you. I move the minutes of the January 23rd and the January 9th meeting minutes as written.
We have a motion. Are there any questions? See, none. All those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously.
And we're to special ceremonies and presentations. We have item two, SLU 2 of 2020, special land use permit for 340 East Edgewood.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. What we have before us is a request for a special land use permit for a self-storage facility at the vacant building formerly Sam's Club. Is the existing zoning is SC commercial, suburban commercial, excuse me. The request is for a special land use permit to utilize the majority of the building at 340 East Edgewood Boulevard for self-storage rental business. The property is currently zoned SC, again suburban commercial, which does permit self-storage if a special land use permit is approved by the Lansing City Council. Let's see, the applicant's proposal is to reserve two 6,800 square feet spaces at the northeast corner of the building for retail use. The applicant has also indicated its intent to reduce the amount of parking on the site by constructing additional retail space and/or converting a significant amount of the parking lot into green space. Let's see, the, it was, it received a favorable, looks like it received a favorable review from the planning board. And the request for special land use, this, the property is owned if special land use is approved by Lansing City Council following review and a recommendation by the planning board. With that, it looks like the planning board did recommend it, and we'll have them come down and provide an overview.
Thank you. If you could come forward into the well area and take a seat at the table, you would make sure that your mic is on. Councilmembers, there is a presentation in your red folder, so please make sure that you're looking at that. And then we will turn it over to you, sir, and you can introduce yourself, and then make your presentation.
Good to be here this evening. Just reflecting, don't get to say the pledge allegiance very often, so it's definitely a highlight coming to these for that reason. My name is Mike Olson. I represent Devon Self-Storage. We are the ones that are interested in purchasing this property on 340 East Edgewood Boulevard. I'm assuming you guys have the PDF file that we sent out?
Yes.
Okay. So just a little background, we've been around for about 30 years. We're a fully funded operation, meaning we don't have to go seek out funding when we do these type of projects, which we are for this one. It's usually a 12-month construction process. Once we get our entitlements, we move forward and opening an operation. So we're on a tight time crunch with construction, so it's not something that we like to delay, and it's something that we will complete on a timely manner. So just so you have an expectation of where we're coming into the project. When you think of self-storage, I think you should view us a little bit differently. The way we're unique is we're going to do a drive-through facility, and a good slide that orchestrates that is on page four. If you look at it, there's an aerial of the building. You'll see the drive-through lane highlighted in yellow. The office is at the bottom left, and then also showing where we're carving out the retail space on the bottom right of that photo. So what makes us stand out is that, really is that drive-through lane. It's nice because a customer can come in and, totally out of the weather, climate-controlled with their vehicle, totally inside the storage facility. So it's a very convenient process, very safe process, for somebody to come in and drop off their stuff, to unload or load. On this, on this facility, we would typically have about 60 cameras or so for this size. And to get into the facility is a keypad, to get out of the facility is a keypad, and it's tied to every customer. So it's a very monitored process of who comes into the building, who leaves the building. So we'll have two keypads for that as well. When we, when we go into the market to see if it's a viable option for us, we do a lot of analysis. And part of that analysis is to see if there is a need. And so we call that market saturation. And so we look at, within a three-mile radius, and if you go to slide, it looks like page eight, this kind of helps illustrate it. So we look at a three-mile drive radius, and mainly because people aren't interested in driving more than that to go to a self-storage facility. And we'll take all the competitors in that three-mile radius, and we'll add up all the square footage of that, and then we'll take the population of that within the three miles, and we'll divide it, and we'll come up with a number. That number for this facility in this area is 6.6. So the national average, and this isn't a formula we have come up with, this is just a national standard, how to calculate saturation. National average is 10. So this location is 6.6, which is a clear indicator that it's underserved, this market. The reason why I bring that up is, and there has been genuine concern of, hey, we have enough self-storage. And sometimes I call that the white car effect. I don't know if anybody's ever bought a white car or any car, and that's all you seem to notice when it's brought to your attention. But this is an important factor because it shows clearly that there's a need, and we wouldn't spend the time and energy if there wasn't. So there's a clear need for it. We've had, we recognize self-storage is probably not the first option that people want, but the landscape in retail is changing. I think you all have probably seen that and had experience with that within your city. But we would be, we believe that we'd be a great, a great tenant, we'd be a great neighbor to both the strip mall and the community. As far as the city goes, in year 10, and I think that was on the first slide, but we project that property taxes in year 10 would be close to $675,000 annually on just that property. We've, we've received a little opposition respectfully, and we think we understand their-
Just for clarification.
Yeah.
Are you saying your property or the entire site?
What do you mean? Our property, the entire site?
It says 10 years projected, $675,342. Are you talking about-
The property tax for that, that site. Yeah, for the building.
For just your building?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So we have seen a little bit of opposition with the neighbors that has kind of been vocal, which is great. We, we totally encourage opinions and engaging the community. We're all about working with one another. So in part with that, that's why we've carved out that retail space, is because that's been such a strong need and desire to maintain some type of retail component to it. The other aspect to that is my counterpart and I, we came out a couple weeks ago, and we wanted to talk to all the businesses on the strip mall. And I think, I think you saw or sent, seen that PDF with the signatures.
Mm-hmm.
So we tried to be as benign as we could with that. And so we went and talked to all the businesses, we asked for the owners, and if they weren't there, then we'd get the store managers and talk to them. And we essentially just, we had a photo of what we wanted to convert the building into, and we said, "We're just going around to get your opinion. Would you want self-storage here? Yes or no? There's no right or wrong answer." All the businesses in that strip said yeah. There's a general consensus of, we don't want vacancy. It's been vacant for a while. Even, even the manager at Target said, "Yes, we would love to have a long-term tenant that's going to bring stability there." And the main reason for that is, it was interesting because when we talked to the people at T-Mobile, they're, just right next to them has gone vacant. And they expressed that at least twice it's been broken into, they busted through the sheet rock and slept in their bathroom for the night. So there is a general vandalism goes up, nobody wants a vacant space, it's just not good for business, and all of them were in favor of it. So we took it a step further, and we went across the street, just right across the street, and we took two hours to go knock doors, and we asked them the same questions. And in that two hours, we were able to talk to about 35 people. 29 of those said, "Yeah, we would love to have you here." In all fairness, we had four between myself and my coworker that was with me that said, "No, we don't want you here." And they didn't want to put their, their name to a signature on that paper, but in fairness, I wanted to represent them. So I simply share that because there is both support for it in the community directly across the street, and it was really just two hours of us talking to people. The businesses want somebody there that's going to bring stability, help bring stability to the strip mall. And I think that is something that we can definitely do and provide. Having said that, I feel like I've talked long enough. If there's any questions that you council members have, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Questions. I first have Councilmember Koss, then Councilmember Hussein, and Vice President Garza, and Councilmember Spitzley.
Oh, great.
Thank you, Madam President. Just, I needed a point of clarification. When you ask these questions to these folks, did you ask them if they wanted a long-term tenant in that building, or did you specify that it was going to be self-storage? Because I thought I heard you say "bold."
So this, this is how I pitched it to them, and we wanted to be as unbiased, obviously, for it. Said, "Hey, we are looking to purchase this building. It is the old Sam's Club. We are going to convert it into self-storage. This is what it's going to look like. It'll be a drive-through facility. We're going around getting public opinion of saying, would you want us? Would you not, as neighbors? There's no wrong answer. We just want to get your opinion if you would want us to be there." That was as simple as we pitched it. And many of the neighbors, in fact, voiced the same concerns as some of the other business tenants of, they're tired of, tired of the vandalism, they're tired of the burnouts in the parking lot. A couple of them said, "Yeah, there's a van that parked out there for two weeks, and now he's parking behind our place." So in general, people want it filled. So that's, that's how we posed it to them.
So I'm just, I'm curious, a drive-through facility that has all of the security systems that you just mentioned, all of the great technology stuff, if people are inside that building and not outside the building, how do you see that bringing down those issues on that building? Because they're basically just going through a garage door into a secured facility, and then, you know, they're out of eyesight.
Yeah. As far as, it's an occupied, occupied place versus not. If anything's vac, I don't know how you were in your teenage years, but if anything's vacant, it's just an open playground. If there's some active viable business there, you're, you're less likely to entertain those ideas. And especially the lighting of the parking lot in the area of the business. So I think in general, that would be a deterrent for all of that.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Hussein, and then Vice President Garza.
Thank you. First of all, and I've said this a lot tonight, I may have missed this, is where's Devon Self-Storage? You guys are based out of where?
So our headquarters is in Emeryville, California. We've got about 115 facilities over the US, so we're pretty scattered. We've got seven facilities currently in Michigan, four in Grand Rapids, two in Holland, one in Jenningson, and then we've got two others that we're currently developing in Detroit. Michigan is a state that we love to be in.
And I appreciate that. I'm looking for long-term economic impact, so I'm not worried about the temporary construction jobs at this point. How many onsite jobs in perpetuity are going to be created by this development?
Great question. So typically, we'll have two managers onsite, and that's, that's who will manage the facility.
So, so two?
Yep.
And pay is what? Rate of pay?
The managers?
Yes.
Salary positions, and it varies on the area, but I think the average is about $17, $18 an hour.
Seventy, okay, so two jobs, $17, $18 an hour. You guys are based out of California, so the big money will be essentially being exported to California. Appreciate that. Did you, when you talked to the local businesses, were you honest with them, also the residents in the area, honest with them about the number of jobs this would create, number one? And number two, the amount of traffic that this would generate, or should I say not generate, on a, on a daily basis? Because frankly, you're not going to generate much of anything in the way of whether that be pedestrian, vehicle, or traffic, which means that there will be no incidental business for those other, those other businesses. So in terms of, you know, reactivating, this is a blight, frankly.
This is a what? Sorry?
This, this particular building is not blight, so we're not looking at necessarily reactivating blight. And there are actual uses right now regarding that particular property. I don't know if you know that, I would assume you do.
Short-term leases, right?
But, but again, I'm interested to know what that conversation sounded like when you got all of these. Frankly, I'm surprised people signed this. We, we had a Logan Square conversation on January 31st, which is not far from this site. And people were there, about 130. It was an incredibly well-turned-out event.
That's great.
In any event, when things were being discussed, the consultant actually said, you know, what have you guys ever thought about self-storage? And the boos from the crowd were so incredibly loud, I felt it in my feet, literally. I mean, it was that bad. I had a constituent contact meeting this past Saturday where we had almost 40 people on hand, and we discussed this, and I spoke. Now, I can be very candid here at this stage, but when I presented at that particular meeting, I presented from a very, you know, kind of just objective, and, and wanted folks to know that this public hearing was happening, and here's what, you know, being proposed, every single person in that room. And it was, I mean, it was a passionate note that this cannot continue in South Lansing. So this is surprising to me, so I'm really interested to know what that conversation sounded like. Beyond that, what do you have right now in terms of, you have a purchase agreement on this particular property, and is that contingent upon a successful SLU?
Yeah.
What does that look like? Okay. So would it be fair to say that the property owner, and maybe even our own economic development team, would not be entertaining conversations from other potential buyers at this time? People that might be interested when you look at retail, when you look at recreation, when you look at entertainment?
Oh, other people filling the space?
Sure.
And I think I'll let the brokers speak to that, because they've had way more experience as far as the interest in that and the public hearing, so I would maybe save that question for them. What's that?
How long have you had this under agreement?
We've, we've been involved in this project for about 11 months, probably a little more.
Okay. What, what are your rents per square footage?
Rent per square foot.
Is that how you base your rents? Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's based on market, so we see what is going on in the market. And there's an algorithm how that's, how that's based, you know, per square foot basis, it's different for each unit. So it's, it's really, we let the market determine that.
Do you know at, you know, I'm going to be honest with you, I really struggle, I know folks that are in the business, and they will admit to me off the record that it is, it's a cash-out business, creates almost no local economic impact, really praised upon transient and vulnerable populations, frankly. The fines-
Sorry, what? Praise on the-
Absolutely.
Oh, sorry, say it again.
I said praise upon transient and vulnerable populations.
Okay.
Beyond that, the fines and fees are outrageous. You have your introductory rates, and they seem real, you know, they seem fantastic. And then you guys, you know, I shouldn't say you guys, the industry tends to absolutely trap people in this vicious cycle of financial, I wouldn't say dependency, but it's, it's a struggle. And I'm curious, what rates are you all closing on contracts and taking possession of people's personal property? Do you know?
And I guess you're getting to a subject of people that have gone delinquent and haven't paid for several months.
That's exactly what I'm asking.
I don't, I don't have those statistics offhand.
Okay. And have you, when you did your market analysis, were you able to take a look at what the vacancy rate of the self-storage facilities that we actually have on hand?
How occupied they are?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that's part of our analysis.
And in that term?
We were in the 90s, 90% occupancy, I believe, in this market, which is pretty occupied. Yeah. Yeah, 92 is what we had it at.
Okay. It's, it's interesting to me that, that you know that, but you don't know that. This drive-through piece is not unique in terms of the city of Lansing, so we have U-Haul, we have extra space, we have. So you know some things about these particular entities, but, but certainly not everything. I appreciate your time today.
Vice President Garza, and then Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate you being here tonight. You're kind of on the hot seat right now, but it's, it's, it's an issue in South Lansing that a lot of constituents have been reaching out and are definitely in opposition of another storage facility in South Lansing. But I do have a couple of questions now. So the, this, this list of people that you sign on, because we also have a pretty extensive list, emails and letters of opposition, did you just, how did, when you walked into the store, did you ask to speak to the manager? Was it the owner? Like, because I've been to a few of these stores as well recently, and I see a couple of names on here that weren't supportive, and I talked to the management. I'm just wondering, who signed these? Were they just a rank-and-file worker? Was it the owner, manager?
So we didn't speak to any of the owners, it was store managers primarily. We asked if the owner was there, and, you know, commonly, that was not the case, so we asked for the store manager. Yeah, those that worked the store are very familiar with it.
Okay, did you, did you bother asking if they lived in the area?
Yeah, a lot of them commuted into it, so they weren't in the immediate area. Yeah, and we recognized that. And that's, that's also one reason why we thought it's so important to go knock doors right across the street.
Okay, I appreciate that as well. So, and I asked you this question when we were in Development and Planning Committee meeting, and at that time, you didn't have any retailers signed on yet to this property. Do you have any?
Still the case. Still the same.
No retailer signed.
Right.
Okay. Okay, now, I guess this, this question would be for, well, I, let me, let me step back. So the market analysis that you provided, that you said it wasn't under, it wasn't saturated, the market wasn't saturated for South Lansing. So there's another market analysis that was provided to us that says that it is saturated. So I'm just wondering, is this a biased group that you went to that's, that's giving you these numbers? Because we also have a market analysis from another self-storage unit that's saying that it is saturated.
And I guess I can't speak to their market study, I can just speak to ours, as in, we wouldn't deploy cash or capital if we weren't serious about it. If the market was oversaturated, that's one of the things that would kill the deal for us. So it's, it's something that we take seriously, and yeah, our numbers bear out that it was around a six and a half, and national average is 10. So for us in our analysis, it was underserved.
Okay, thank you. Now, my final question, I guess this is to the administration. Is this property, because I know like the old story holds, that's on Cedar and Edgewood, is considered a opportunity zone. Is this property considered an opportunity zone as well?
I believe it is.
I will confirm, City Council. I will confirm.
All right, no further questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. In your opening, thanks for being here tonight. In your opening statement, you talked about your timeline, and, but you also said it was dependent on entitlements as well. So what entitlements are you going to be seeking?
Specifically, this approval. So once we get the approval from the City Council to move forward, and we can start pulling permits, that's essentially when our timeline would start. So once we get the green light of, yes, you guys are able to be here, you've got the green light, and I know the contingency, or some of those contingencies, was the, the green space that has been wanted and desired in the parking lot.
So there are no, you're not coming for a Brownfield or an Oprah, you're, you know, the only, because I asked what type of entitlements, because you mentioned entitlements, so I'm trying to figure out which type of entitlements are you, are you going to seek out? What incentives or whatever else, other than the special land use?
Special land use.
That's the only thing?
Yeah. Yeah, we just want to build our facility. So whatever allows us to do that.
Wait.
No, there's no trick in that answer, so what's your smile?
Because I'm naturally cynical, so you just said, you said whatever allows you to do that, but you're just saying that it's just the special land use, right?
Yes, because that's our understanding, is that's what we need to be able to build. So once we obtain that, then we can start building permits, and that's when our timeline would start.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hussein.
Just very quickly, one of the things we legally can't look at when we take a look at SLU, we've been told time and time again, is we can take a look at, at public, at public sentiment. I'm curious, just because this is all on public record, has the administration taken a position at all on more, when we, if it was zoned properly, they didn't need a SLU, they didn't need any type of land use consideration, I mean, they would be able to go by right, right? Go forward and actually do this development. So my question is, have you all taken a position in terms of actually accommodating applicants in this way when it pertains to self-storage in South Lansing?
We haven't taken a position on any specific industry. If somebody buys a property and it is correctly zoned, they can do what they want with the property. So I have not taken a position on any specific industry.
But in this event, they're, they're asking for a special land use, so that's, that's my question.
Right, it goes to, it goes to zoning, and they evaluate it based on the master plan, and they, they don't evaluate it based on use, they evaluate it based on the technical pieces.
But as our mayor?
Have I?
No, I'm just curious.
I generally think we have a lot of self-storage in South Lansing, but I haven't seen any of the market studies, one way or the other, to weigh in with those details. But my opinion is that that's a very important property that I think can be used for a high use, and I'm willing to look at all options that come, should we have options presented to us. I do want to weigh in, Councilman Garza, it is in an opportunity zone. I pulled up the map, I thought it was. We did the whole Edgewood, we did four in southwest Lansing, Edgewood and southeast Lansing, and then I think it was one or two on the north side, but it is an opportunity zone.
Thank you.
I've got Councilmember Spitzley that wanted to follow up, and then Councilmember Brown.
So here's my, here's my struggle, is that, you know, as we look at, because this is an opportunity zone, as we look at the city as a whole, and this has nothing to do with you, my struggle with it is that, you know, we have these things brought forth to us, and we don't have, I mean, I, I question, you know, whether or not, and I don't know, I've, I've read the market reports, both for and against, but, you know, the Economic Development Department has not really came forward to say yea or nay. And that sometimes is a problem, because if we're on the fence or there's a concern, it's, it's important, I think, to hear from the Economic Development Department on what side of the fence they, they are on. I think that we need to do a better job of looking at- I think that we need to do a better job of looking at the city as a whole and figuring out what we want there and market it that way versus, you know, if they check all the boxes, then putting it there. Because we can look at our downtown and see that our downtown is struggling, because at one point, and it wasn't this administration, it was previous administrations, made a decision to accept whatever that came along. And what came along at the time was a bunch of office buildings. And then when COVID hit and people stayed home, and now we have large vacancies. And so I think we need to do a better job as we look at the city and look at what our needs are. You know, the storage unit is problematic to me, I'm going to tell you right now. I live on the south side and for me to go to my mom's house, if I go down Martin Luther King, I pass at least three in a half mile. And so that's a problem for me. So I, you know, I understand what Councilman Hussein is saying, but I think it's not as much, it's our Economic Development Department as we look at it. I would like to hear more from them when these things come to our committee as to what their thought was and what their thought process was that went into bringing this forth. And a lot of times, we don't hear that. And so then we're kind of left to our own devices of deciding how this fits into the grander scheme of economic development in the city.
Just a couple of things to address your comments before Councilmember Brown. As Chair of Development and Planning, I definitely recommend that you ask them to come. I think the city attorney would say to us that when someone fills out a request such as a special land use or rezoning, that has to move through the process. It can't be just stopped because we don't necessarily agree with it. The mayor has a couple of options when he refers things to us. One can be with a letter of support, one can be that it's just a referral, you know, and the last could be that they speak to us in a committee process stating whether they, that they don't support it. So I think we've got, you know, a couple of options there. And from what I'm hearing, without looking at the referral, that it was just mainly a referral from the mayor without an opinion one way or another.
Well, and we have these conversations back and forth, just to let everybody know, because we can't have these conversations off topic, because we have to have these conversations in a public forum. And so if somebody's looking like, why is she responding back to President Wood? That's because these conversations have to be in a public forum. I get what you said, I think there needs to be a larger, and, you know, I've talked to Barb about it and she agrees. There needs to be, I think, a larger thought process in planning on what we want our city to look like.
I don't agree.
And so, and I'm so excited that Barb seems to be very open to that type of conversation. And so then that, I think that would go a long way in determining where we want things and what we want.
Councilmember Brown, I did see that the mayor had a comment, did you want to take his comment first? Okay, Mayor Shore.
Thank you, I just, again, this is your debate, not mine, I just wanted to throw in, this is the whole idea of the MLK corridor authority, which I know several of you have helped us to recruit members for, and that is exactly what they are discussing, that's the report that they put out. So I think that that group, which I am fully supportive of, which we all helped to create, is business owners and residents. I know several of you, again, have been very involved with that. So I think that for this area, which is a very important area, which is why we created this here along with the neighborhoods of focus, that is exactly the idea. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you so much. As an at-large member, you know, traveling to all over the city with the neighborhood groups, being engaged with constituents, I have not, you know, to Councilman Hussein's point, have heard any constituents or groups in support of an additional self-storage in South Lansing or really in Lansing in its entirety. So I just wanted to share that.
Okay, thank you. We want to, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, I just wanted to weigh in, because I was in the Development and Planning Committee when we talked about this and we had the person who was marketing the property speak. And I can say, I don't like or want more or use more self-storage units. However, it was pretty clear that there aren't any people trying to get that property except for self-storage. And that's a trend that's kind of nationally, all the malls are closing, there's so much space of these big buildings that are no longer in use. So I do think it's going to come down, whether it's this group, Devon, or a future one, I think it's going to come down to that self-storage or hope for the best in the future and let years keep on passing. And then even though it's not blighted yet, two, three, whoever knows how many years, it will be blighted. I know people want, put in an amusement park, put in a water park, put in all these things that would be really awesome except recruiting those private businesses to come invest there when they do market studies, just like Devon does. And Devon realizes it's profitable for their business, the other groups like the water park, for example, they're going to look and say it's not profitable, or else they probably would be exploring the property. So I'm not decided how I'll vote, but I just, since it's a public forum, wanted to speak that part because it hasn't been mentioned yet.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. I have Vice President Garza and then Councilmember Brown, and then we'll close it up.
Thank you, Council President, I just wanted to speak to Councilman Jackson's comment there. You know, I believe that other people may be interested, however, they, you guys have been in a purchase agreement for 11 months, you stated?
Not 11 months, we've been interested in the property for 11 months. I'd have to look exactly when we got, went under contract, but it has been a number of months that we've been under contract.
So I guess I'm just curious to see, once that purchase agreement does phase out, what other players come to the table?
Councilmember Brown and then I have Councilmember Spitzley that will finish out.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I would disagree with Councilman Jackson's mindset or philosophy around this. I think that we're in an age where we're inspired for economic development, where there is great opportunity. I think we're in the middle of building, Mayor Shore has recreated the Lansing Economic Development Corporation to really focus on, you know, sparking economic development throughout Lansing and attracting new opportunities that's diverse, empowered, and impactful in our city. And I think that we need to believe that as a city and not just say, well, we're, hopefully have this building sitting here and just take whatever we can get. Looking at what Councilwoman, as the Chair of Economic Development and Planning, has articulated, the overall bigger picture and how we as a community can look at things strategically versus, you know, building by building is very important for us to have the thriving Lansing that we all believe in. Thank you.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President, I will just close and say, you know, I'm in 14 states and I do economic development in 14 states. And I tell, and I always tell my communities, if I'm before City Council, what I tell them is economic development is a marathon and it's not a sprint. And so you need to figure out what you want in your community and that's how you market it towards. You know, taking, you know, whatever comes along and checks all the boxes at the end of the day is not necessarily the best thing for our community. We have built, we have property and buildings where we have held them for 10 years before we found the appropriate job creator, economic development, and growth that the community has wanted. And so it's a double-edged sword. As a council member, I want it filled, I want the tax base for the city of Lansing. But I also want economic development, I want jobs, I want, you know, the appropriate things. But I want it in a way where we've looked at our city and decided what we want our city to be. And we need to have those conversations first. And before we start bringing in and, you know, saying just because it meets all of this, we're just going to bring it to council. We need to, it needs to be part of our larger plan, as the mayor said, part of our larger master plan. And I'm not quite sure in the past that that's been done. And so we need to do a better job. It is truly a marathon for economic development and true great economic development. Thank you.
Thank you. I have just one question and then we're going to move on. And before we take public comment, we are going to do the three appointments that are here with us. My question to you, sir, is, you named a number of locations that you're currently at. In the last seven years, have you closed any of those locations?
No.
Okay, in the last 10 years, have you closed any of those locations?
No.
All right, thank you. Thank you, and we'll be having the public hearing in just a few minutes and you're welcome to stay and listen to the public at this time. We will move on to Councilmember Spitzley. We have two appointments and I will turn to you for the first one.
Thank you, Madam President, I'm trying to figure out which ones first on our thing.
We've got item number four, Chaz Ferillo.
So.
Followed by item five and then item 10.
Thank you, so Chaz, hey, come on down here. So he came before Development and Planning and he is serving on the Board of Economic Development Corporation Tax Increment Finance Authority, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. So we talked to Chaz in economic development, he's in Ward Three and he is very active with the Hispanic Chamber and very active in our, with the Chamber. He also turned us on to a great new falafel place that's off Waverly Road. I didn't know that place existed, but I do now. And he did commit to being very transparent and coming out to neighborhood groups and community groups if necessary to answer questions and bring forth information. And with that, I would move the resolution to appoint him to the Economic Development Corporation Tax Increment Finance Authority. I do not recall when the term is, I apologize.
February 28th, 2028.
So for, till February 28th, 2028. So with that, I'll move the.
Okay, we have a motion to move. Questions, Councilmember Coffs.
Thank you, President Wood, just real quick. You have been here in the section that asks you to be specific about what your goals are with this group, that the mayor asked me and I'm interested in serving. Could you maybe just a little bit elaborate on why you want to serve on this a little more?
Sure, we had the discussion when we, when I was interviewed. That was probably the eighth time I had filled out that form, so I was a little frustrated with the process, but we have a lot of security in the industry I'm in, so that's why it was brief that time. But I had been in conversations with people on the committee and talked to the mayor several times about serving in this capacity. My hesitation for any such group is obviously time commitment, but also effectiveness. I don't feel like it's important to join something unless I can have impact. And so through those conversations over the last three years, specifically with Andrea, who's on the committee now and I think is just getting off, they convinced me that we could have real impact in this role and that's why I decided to join now.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously, and if you could come forward and get sworn in.
Okay, go ahead and raise your right hand, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of?
Of the Office of.
Economic Development Corporation.
Economic Development Corporation.
Tax Increment Finance Authority.
Tax Increment Finance Authority.
Lansing Brownfield Redevelopment Authority.
Lansing Brownfield Real Estate. Redevelopment. Authority.
Board of Directors.
Board of Directors.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Okay, with that, Councilmember Spitzley, our next appointment to the same board.
Thank you, Madam President, Sandra Lupien, would you please come down to the well? So Sandra was at our Development and Planning meeting. She is Director of Mass Timber at Michigan State University, where they talk about, her focus is on sustainability and environmental issues. She talked about, you know, how she would hope to bring some of that knowledge to the Tax Increment Economic Development Corporation Tax Increment Finance Authority, Lansing Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board of Directors as well. And that she, you know, she left Michigan, went and did her thing internationally and now has decided to come back to Michigan State and come back and make Lansing her home. And she wants the opportunity to be on a board and provide service. And I thank you for your willingness to serve. And with that, I would move the resolution.
We have a motion on the resolution, are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, passes unanimously.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of?
Of the Office of?
Economic Development Corporation.
Economic Development Corporation.
Tax Increment Finance Authority.
Tax Increment Finance Authority.
Lansing Brownfield Redevelopment Authority.
Lansing Brownfield Redevelopment Authority.
Board of Directors.
Board of Directors. According to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we have another appointment and we'll turn to Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I see Mr. Florencio Hernandez is in the audience, could you please step up to the well, sir? So this is an appointment of Florencio Hernandez for an at-large member of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board for a term to expire June 30th, 2025. So Mr. Florencio, first and foremost, born and raised here in Lansing, very impressive resume, sir. You know, he came to us before on February 8th, last Wednesday, to the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee and he has a lot of good, a lot of good plans that he plans on bringing forth to our committee and to the advisory board. So I'm super proud to have you here, very supportive of you, I will be supporting you tonight. But, I mean, one of the things that stuck out in here, he says he believes in creating an equitable environment where everyone feels safe and that they belong in this community. That's a powerful statement, I appreciate that, and with that, I would move the resolution.
We have a motion on the resolution, are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, passes unanimously. So now if we could take this one in.
Repeat after me, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of?
Of the Office of.
Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board Member.
Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board Member. That was a mouthful. According to the best of my ability.
And as we move forward, this is an opportunity for Councilmember comments, do we have any Councilmember comments? I have Councilmember Jackson, Councilmember Hussein.
Thank you, just wanted to announce our Fourth Ward Constituent Contact Meeting every fourth Saturday of the month. So this month, that falls on the 25th. And it's at Gregory's, which is 2510 North Martin Luther King. We can talk about anything city and especially Fourth Ward related. And thank you to all the people that came last month, looking forward to it again this month, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein.
Yes, so I'd also like to thank folks that came out to our Third Ward Constituent Contact Meeting this past Saturday. Special thanks to Inglewood County Treasurer Alan Fox, as well as our Land Bank Executive Director Roxanne Case, who are both on hand, they provided great information, answered a number of questions and I thought really empowered people. So it was really exciting and we had a number of area representatives. So it was, it was really exciting, and we had a number of area representatives that shared information. And then, of course, as always, we talked about broader, you know, kind of City of Lansing issues and the issues that are before City Council. So again, we appreciate everybody that came out. Our next constituent contact meeting will be March 11th at 10:00 a.m., and that's at 5825 Wise Road, which is the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center. I also wanted to thank folks that came out to the Logan Square Conversation on January 31st. This is part of a kind of broader information gathering, market analysis, redevelopment kind of effort, and it was incredible. Very, very well attended, north of 100 people. The energy was, was, I mean, it was palpable. It was just an incredible, incredible turnout. A number of people at the dais were there, a number of folks in the audience were there. I want to thank Aurelius Christian with the LEDC, who helped to organize the event, as well as Place and Main Consultants. There are, my understanding, there will be, we've gotten a lot of emails, a lot of calls. You know, folks want to provide their input, weren't able to make the meeting. But in any event, the, my understanding is they are going to design and at some point execute additional public information sessions. And so what I'd like to do as those opportunities arise is obviously information share and make sure that as many people as possible can come be a part of that conversation. With that being said, there are a couple Neighborhood Association meetings in the Third Ward this week. The Colonial Village Neighborhood Association meeting will be, I'm sorry, Neighborhood Association will be meeting this Wednesday, February 15th at 7:00 p.m., and that's at Grace United Methodist. That is at 1900 Boston Boulevard. They are looking to grow their participation, grow their membership, but also they're looking to fill a number of leadership positions. So if you have any interest in that, please, please, please come on out. Again, that's at 7:00 p.m. And if you live in the areas bound by Mount Hope to the north, MLK to the east, West Homes to the south, and Pleasant Grove to the, to the west, then you are part of the Colonial Village, and you are more than welcome. In fact, you're encouraged to attend. And then also the Luton, sorry, the Luton Rich Neighborhood Association will be meeting this Thursday, 7:00 p.m. That's at the Mayflower Church at 2901 West Mount Hope, and that group will be meeting at, again, 7:00 p.m. Luton Rich Neighborhood runs north to Mount Hope. They run east to Pleasant Grove, south to Victor, and then west to Deerfield. And so if you live in that area, you are part of the Luton Rich Neighborhood Association, and they would be thrilled if you would come out and participate in that meeting. With that being said, oh, last one, I'm sorry. Rejuvenating South Lansing as well is meeting again Tuesday, February 28th at 6:30 p.m. This is at 5825 Wise Road. The group had a fantastic turnout at their January 24th meeting, and really talked a little bit about, you know, goals, objectives, and what that group's work looks like moving forward. And so I expect as, as good of a turnout, and I expect a ton of work to be done at that meeting. So again, that is Tuesday, February 28th at 6:30 p.m.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other Councilmember comments? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, President Wood. Just a couple of quick announcements. As you may recall, at the last meeting, I introduced a new council intern. While that was short-lived, he got stolen away by a member of the legislature to do an internship across the street. So I'd like to welcome our new council intern, Lauren Welch, who was, is actually going to be doing a double internship in my office this term. She's, so thank you, Lauren, for stepping up. She'll be assisting people with signing in for the next few months. So welcome, Lauren. I also want to mention that we are currently accepting, we are in a window for marijuana retail sales location. We have one opening. One of the previously approved applicants did not come through with, with being able to open their facility, so we do have one slot open of the 28 available in the city. And the application deadline is March 1st for that. And then it is a council election year, and the filing deadline is April 25th at 4:00 p.m. We have the First and Third Ward Council positions open, as well as two of the at-large positions. So that will be on the August primary and November general election. So you can contact my office about filing for any of those positions. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If anyone in the audience has a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details about it.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Kason from the Women's Center of Greater Lansing. I'm here every month, but I want to tell you, a week from Saturday is our We Laugh fundraiser. You can get tickets on our website. We have seven comics lined up, and we are really excited. It should be a fun night. I also want to let you know that as of the first week in March, we are renaming our, what is now known as our professional clothing closet, to our career boutique. People will still be able to come and get free clothing, but the goal is for people to feel as much dignity as possible, and we felt that the term closet didn't evoke the same emotions that boutique would. And, you know, people are growing up there. It's set up like a boutique. We have staff up there to help them find outfits, things that you would find in a boutique. So, yeah, so as of the first week of March, it will, the name will be the Career Boutique.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community events? All right, seeing none, we are to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters, and legislative matters does include items three through 12 on the council agenda. And we'll be collecting, Lauren will be collecting those for the next minute or so. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
All right, I will jump right in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I don't like to jump in without, you know, you're the.
Mayor, sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
You, like all of us, do not move unless.
I do not move. Just, look, I'm just, you know, trying to.
You're not, you're not, you're not alone.
Be a good actor here. Thank you, Madam President.
You're very welcome.
So I will apologize for being late to the meeting, but I will say I was late for a good reason. We have right now going on at the Lansing Center our Daddy Daughter Dance and Mother-Sun Dance, which is awesome. There were so many people there, it was ridiculous. They're having so much fun. I got pictures, we'll put them up on social media. There was still a line when I left, so we're going to extend it out. I think it was supposed to go until eight, so we're going to extend it out until 8:30 or nine. But know that our constituents are having so much fun right now, and they are dressed to the nines. It was adorable. So I apologize for being late, but for good reason, and I was happy to walk around, and people are really excited about the city. So many people coming up and saying, "Thank you so much for doing this." I had one guy come up and said, "How do we do this for only $10?" And I was like, "Because we're efficient, we're good government." But, so know that that's going on. On a less happy note, I know I wasn't here in the beginning, so I wasn't able to be here for the prayer. Wanted everyone to know we should keep Commissioner Victor Salantino in mind. His nephew Philip, who's a Lansing constituent, had a sudden heart attack on Monday and passed away. So hopefully we will all keep Vic in our, our thoughts and prayers and his family. I know we all know Vic. So, very sad, but I know, I told him we'll all be there for him, whatever he needs. Wanted to pass on that I got at least 10, if not 15 compliments at State of the State on the conditions of the Lansing roads. It was snowing pretty hard. Councilman Garza, you were there, Councilman Spatafor, I think you were there, and, and I kept, I kept having people coming up to me saying, "I'm coming from southeast Michigan, and as soon as we got into Lansing, the roads were great." So I passed it on Andy Kilpatrick and his staff, but it's not often you get people, like 10 to 11 to 12 people coming up to you to tell you how great your roads are. So that was good. So congratulations to our public service staff. I want to congratulate all the winners at the Old Town Strong Awards Ceremony. That was a lot of fun, a great event up in Old Town. Want to congratulate Linda Sanchez-Gazella on her retirement. We haven't had a meeting since, and then she has retired. Similarly, Brian McGrane has moved on to direct a statewide association, so congrats to both of those folks. I add on my list also to talk about the incredible Logan Square Conversation that we had. Thanks also to Place and Main. They did a great job, thanks to the 100 or so people that showed up with great ideas and opinions. It went long, but people had a lot to say, so that was awesome. Thanks to the EDC staff who put it together, both Simon and Aurelius sitting in the audience. Also, I want to thank everyone who was part of the Lansing Shuffle opening. If you haven't been to Lansing Shuffle yet, you're missing something a lot of fun right here in Lansing. It's been packed. I got texts over the weekend that it was packed, so that's great. And then two other things, I don't know if Chaz is still here, no, so I wanted to congratulate Chaz and Sandra. Exciting to have them both. And just so everyone knows, we now have both the President of the Hispanic Chamber of Lansing, as well as the President of the Black Chamber of Lansing, both on our EDC board, which I think is incredible for diverse opinions on that board. And then finally, for those paying attention, the governor proposed an exciting budget proposal with a lot of things, including increases, an increase in revenue sharing, both one-time and ongoing, and she introduced a proposal to, to give cities money for public safety based on crime rates. I worked with Mike Duggan and a variety of others in the urban core mayors, and we're really excited to see this proposal. Certainly, you know, we want those dollars for our public safety. So I will be pushing our legislators and the legislators across the state to approve that, and I hope we all will. It's good for our city, it's good for cities across the state. Thank you, Madam President.
You are entirely welcome.
All right, we're to public comment on legislative matters, and again, that includes items three through 12 on the agenda, and I do want to acknowledge a number of written communications. We have letters opposing SLU 2 of 2022 from David and Elaine Wombolt, from Sheila Miffen, from Dagmar Olds, from Judy Redding, from Kathy Toby, from Gail Sawyer, from Cheryl Brand, from Flo Baron, from Gary Garrett at MySpace Self-Storage, from Jason Wilks, facilitator of Rejuvenating South Lansing, from Nancy O'Shea, and Albert Johnson, and Antoine Kent. And here in person to address us tonight on that and other topics, we have Loretta Stanaway, followed by Todd Costa.
Well, I was against putting the U-Haul facility in the Kmart property, and as we know, that went through, but if you may not have been down that way to see, the building that they are putting up in there, to my view, does not fit within the parameters of the plans they showed to the public before they put that up. It's too close to the sidewalk, it's too tall, it's going to block the view of three businesses when you're driving northbound on Cedar entirely. I don't know that the same company is the one that's looking at this Sam's Club. I was confused there. I thought it was, and it sounds like it is not. But we have a history, and I've said this here many, many times over the years, we have a history of taking the first thing that comes down the pike, cutting ourselves, spiting ourselves, whatever you want to call it, cutting ourselves short, because we're worried that nothing else will come down the pike. So we continually take the first thing that comes along, whether it's the best use or the best deal that we should or could get, without knowing, because once you take that deal, you get no others. So you don't know what might have come after that as an opportunity. So again, here, we're looking at an offer to take a piece of property that is huge and turn it into one business property ownership with a little bit of it carved out for some retail along the way, and generating two jobs and a minimal amount of property taxes and income taxes. I can tell you from my experience talking to individuals, talking to the owners of the businesses along there, talking to the workers along there, and on social media, the public is not in favor of another self-storage place, especially not there. In my personal view, that will be the death knell of that plaza, because it has so few traffics now from Sam's having left and Office Max having left, that putting in something else that is going to have two or three people there on a consistent basis is not going to hold those other businesses afloat. We need to look longer and harder and better at something different. We need our development people to not just throw out a blanket proposal and not internally look and say, "Okay, is there somebody here in the city that we could approach that might be willing to do something different? Turn that into an event center, turn it into a place where there's different parts within it, where there might be a Chuck E. Cheese type place, there might be a bounce house, there might be a meeting space, there might be a place where you could hold weddings and funerals and luncheons in one cafeteria space, serves all of those and acts as an incubator kitchen as well." You've got a lot more people coming and going, generating more income, more jobs, more taxes. You know, this company has not illustrated one single thing that makes them different or better than any of the other companies. And the other companies, some of them, the MySpace in particular, they were promised that we would not overdevelop when they came in and invested the funds they put into the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Todd Costa, followed by Linda Appleen.
Hi, good evening. I'm Todd Costa with Woodworth Commercial. So I've been the real estate broker that's been marketing the Sam's Club for two years now. And I've been a commercial real estate broker for 20 years in Lansing, just specializing on retail properties. So I get hired by retail owners to go find tenants or sell their, sell their buildings. And when I started this project, I didn't want self-storage either, okay? I wanted to launch trampoline, and I wanted a go-kart track like Excalibur. I wanted these bounce houses, I wanted Chuck E. Cheese, I wanted all these other, I mean, I have a seven-year-old and a three-year-old, you know, I want, I want fun stuff for them to do, to take them to. And after 18 months, I'm marketing this thing and calling every retailer, that's all, all I do all day long is I call retailers. I just put the Charlie's Cheesesteak in the old Wendy's on MLK. I put the Wave Backs Laundry on Jolly and Cedar. I put Cricket in Jolly and Cedar. So I have relationships with all these tenants, and I call all these people. And I can't get anybody to come to that building right now. They don't want the demographics of South Lansing. I talked to Dave and Buster, so I go, "No, we want to go out to Eastwood, Eastwood Town Center." I talked to BJ's Wholesale, they say, "No, we want to go out Delta Township." And every month, I go out to Sam's Club, and I have a showing, or I, or I show people around. Sometimes I do that on the weekends, sometimes I take my kids. I can't take my kids out there anymore now, because there's people in the parking lot getting drunk, they're, they're doing fireball shots, they're, they're doing donuts in the parking lot. The Lansing Police won't respond, because they say it's private property. We've had the owner talk to the Lansing Police. So I don't mean to go down a rabbit hole with it, but I'm, I'm just saying, it's very, very difficult to attract in the retail climate that we're in. The last 10 years, brick and mortar is going away, more and more is going online. You got to be creative and repurpose these big box spaces, because we don't need the amount of retail that we used to. So I think, I think strong consideration should be considered to accept this use, their clean use. I mean, I drive up and down MLK, too, and I know they're self-storage, but they're clean properties, and they're, and they're taking, you know, they're taken, taken care of, and I think there's a lot to be said for that. Are there any questions to me, since I've been marketing it for a while, from anybody?
This is your opportunity to speak. If you'd like to be at the Development and Planning Meeting, when this comes up, you have an opportunity to talk, to have questions at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Linda Appleen, followed by Doug Fura.
For the record, my name is Linda Appleen, and I live in South Lansing. I'm here to talk about the special use permit for storage there. On, what was that area? On Edgewood Boulevard. I want to be frank about it, I'm opposed to creating another storage facility in South Lansing. Such a facility would not produce jobs for Lansing residents, nor will it encourage development of small businesses. We already have, as near as I could count, four storage facilities just riding over here. We have another one on Cedar by U-Haul that's not even online yet, but it will be online. There becomes a question of exactly how many do we need? We don't need that many. And that's way too many facilities in our area. As an alternative, believe it or not, I would recommend you encourage people to get rid of their clutter. And that's exactly what you have going into these facilities. I know because I rent one, and it's just junk that I, I am thinking I do not need. People need to get rid of their crap. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Doug Fura. Mike Olson filled out a card, but I don't think he wants to. Mike Olson filled out a card, but I don't think he wants to speak again. All right, so Doug Fura.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Doug Fura, I'm also a commercial real estate agent, been doing it for almost twice as long, close to 40 years. We've seen a lot of changes in the market over the last several years, as this gentleman had alluded to earlier in the day. Amazon online marketing has changed the retail market forever. Sam's Club, I believe, went dark in this building in 2017. There's been a lot of time for other uses. I know they've marketed it very heavily, I know Stock and Field or Stock and Trade was there for a very short period of time. But basically, over the last five or six years, they've had a use in there for 12 months, 18 months, and they've been trying to find long-term uses forever. I personally have been involved in the redevelopment of many of these types of projects throughout the metropolitan Detroit area. Some of them have gone to churches, very, very big churches, 100,000 square feet is a large facility to try and backfill. But there aren't very many 100,000 square foot churches out there right now. We've been involved in a couple of them that have turned into warehouse distribution sites, where they've put additional truck wells in, and now you've got truck traffic in the mornings and in the evenings. This is, yes, it is a quieter use, there's not a tremendous amount of employees, but there is a great deal of security surrounding the site. There will be cameras inside and outside, it eliminates some of the fireworks, some of the burnouts, some of the drinking, some of the problems that they have in the area, and it will be a good, clean use. The reality is, with the changing of the market in general, and with the advent of the online purchases, you're not going to see another retail use backfill that whole 100,000 square feet in the foreseeable future. You may see somebody take 3,000 or 5,000 square feet, they're not going to be able to use the depth that's in there right now, they might, that's why I think Devon wanted to put a couple of smaller retail operations in there, so that will bring some additional jobs, that will bring some additional uses and some additional support to the center. But there just aren't the uses for this type of a building in the retail environment today, nor even in the office environment. We've seen some of them, we're doing one in Grand Rapids right now, that was a call center for the hospitals. They don't need them anymore. So they've demolished all the offices on the inside, and we're converting it to another self-storage. It's just not the uses in today's market for what we would have seen even five years ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that was our last speaker. We are to the referral of the public hearing, item number three.
And that will go back to Development and Planning Committee.
Okay, then we are to the consent agenda, we've already stolen a couple of items off of it, so it's items six through nine are remaining on the consent.
Vice President Garza.
Thank you. I move the consent agenda with the following resolutions. Tribute and recognition of Linda Sanchez-Gonzalez's year of distinguished service to the city upon her retirement. A tribute and recognition of Ryan Wilcox for his years of distinguished service to the police and fire retirement system board of trustees. Setting a public hearing on community development block grant, CDBG amendment to fiscal year 2019 and '20, and fiscal year 2020 and '21 annual action plans. Support of American Airlines exemption to continue Capital Region Airport, LAN to Ronald Reagan Washington National Airport, DCA, and continue the daily non-stop service.
All right, we have the consent agenda before us. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
We are to resolutions for action, we already took up one of those items, so we have item 11, the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act Amendment.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Thank you, Madam President. As you're all aware, Lansing has long had protections for complaints regarding human rights discrimination, including classes not specifically protected by Michigan's Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act. Over the years, I've witnessed, and many of us have seen, many efforts made to remedy the state law, but we've all come up short. This year, Senator Jeremy Moss and Representative Jason Hoskins have bills that are moving through the legislature, and they both stand a real chance of hitting Governor Whitmer's desk. I put this resolution before you for your consideration, urging the passage of Senate Bill Four and House Bill 4,003, to amend the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act to include sexual orientation and gender identity, and I move the resolution.
I have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Councilmember Spatafor.
Okay, we are to ordinances for introduction. The Committee on Development and Planning introduced an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the Lansing codified ordinances by amending Chapter 1212 to add Section 1212.01 that provides, for the renaming of the city planning board to the planning commission pursuant to Section 11 of the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. What we have before us is really a change in the name of the current Lansing Planning Board to Planning Commission. It says on here to comply with state law, but when we were talking in development and planning, the name, we are already in compliance with state law, but to make it a little cleaner and to be consistent, we're changing the name from the Planning Board to the Planning Commission. One of the questions that I asked was whether there are going to be a cost in reprinting the ordinances and everything, and we were told by the city attorney that we necessarily did not have to reprint everything to rename, you know, anything in our charter that says a Planning Board to a Planning Commission. By the change of the name, it's just by right, it references the old Planning Board to the Planning Commission, so there's not really a cost to do this. And so this is an introduction for setting of a public hearing, and I, again, I'm slipping today, I'm trying to figure out when the public hearing is.
March 13th.
It's for March, thank you, President Wood. March 13th, to introduce the ordinance and set the public hearing for March 13th, and with that, I'll move the resolution.
We have a resolution setting a public hearing. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, we're back to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters, that's the yellow sheet in the back, so if you wish to sign up and haven't done so yet, we'll give you about another minute to connect with Lauren in the back. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. I move that all items be considered as being read in full, and that the proper referrals be made by the council president.
I have a motion before us, any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, we have, from the clerk, minutes of boards and commissions.
Placed on file.
The fiscal year 22 to 23 second quarter budget report.
Committee of a whole.
The Hartford annual report.
Committee of a whole.
From the mayor, we have orders, two items relative to orders to make safer, demolish 651 East Jolly.
Public Safety Committee.
We have two items relative to the special assessment of Glenburn Commons.
City Operations.
We have grant acceptance for Community Economic Development Association of Michigan.
Ways and Means Committee.
We have the appointment of Amber Denny to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Board.
The Equity Diversion and Inclusion Committee.
And the appointment of Sean Gailey to the Human Relations and Community Services Board.
City Operations.
Soul Source Purchase, Public Service Department for Systems Specialties, as the vendor for Rotork Valve Actuators.
Ways and Means Committee.
And the appointment of Danielle Grubba as a workforce development member of the Community Corrections Advisory Board.
Public Safety Committee.
Communications and Petition, we have a communication from Rico and Aeneal about road conditions on the south side of Lansing.
City Operations, and placed on file.
Communication from Val Keller objecting to deer killer, killing deer in parks and fender arboretum.
City Operations.
And we have claim appeal for $2,750 in trash removal fees at 1811 Maplewood.
City Operations.
And a claim appeal for $4,538 in trash removal fees at 3140 South Pennsylvania.
City Operations.
All right, we are to remarks by councilmembers.
Are there other comments this evening? Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted everybody to know that the SLU, our request, will be brought back to development and planning on February 15th, which is this upcoming Wednesday, so there's an opportunity to come and make comment and ask, you know, and be present for asking questions. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none.
Remarks by the mayor.
Mayor Shor.
Thank you, Madam President.
Was that, you have nothing at this point?
No, thank you, Madam President.
All right.
And we are to public comments on city government-related matters. Folks have three minutes, and the first speaker is Linda Epling, followed by David Ellis. Linda?
Did you call me?
Yes.
I didn't see your book.
That's okay, I think I sped read it.
Hello, my name, once again, is Linda Epling. I'm here to talk with you right now about the homeless situation in our city. One, in terms of addressing this in part for immediate needs, I strongly urge the use of lets to provide emergency facilities to house people when it's cold outside. I'm aware that this may cost money, but I do not feel that the cost is exorbitant, and I think that we ought to be willing to pay it. My position has always been, people should come before the money. Two, we need to provide legal services to people about to be evicted or where code violations have been determined. The city of Detroit has included a provision providing a right to counsel, and I do have their provision, their ordinance in terms of that, if anybody wants to see it. Now, the right to counsel serves a public purpose, including promoting the public health, safety, general welfare, security, prosperity, and contentment of our city's residents. This is needed badly. Those who are at the bottom of the economic scale, they are not being provided any representation, and just merely being kicked out of their houses. Now, for the record, impropriety, and that's done by the University of Michigan Solutions, specifies that Lansing had 5,593 evictions per year for the period covering 2014 through 2018. We need to address this situation, and we need to provide legal representation to these people. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you. Next, we have David Ellis, followed by Carter Brown.
Hi, David Ellis. I work in the first ward on Michigan Avenue. This past Thursday, I attended the meeting at the Foster Community Center from the Public Service Department about the redevelopment of Michigan Avenue, and the engineers there were answering questions, and I just had a lot of concerns that they absolutely did not help me with. Credit where credit stood, just to start, I want to say that the bike lanes there, including with the redevelopment, that are not in the street but up and against the sidewalk, that is great, that is something I was not expecting out of the city, it's something you'd see in like Chicago or even like Europe, so I'm over the moon happy about that. That being said, there was just a lot of needless issues with it that I want to bring to the city council's attention. To start off, for pedestrians, there is still only five crosswalks between Holmes and Howard Street, with four of those five being over 900 feet apart, the farthest being Foster to Howard, which is 1,680 feet between crosswalks. They were very happy to let us know that they increased the sidewalk on one side of the road by one foot, from six feet to seven feet, which, just as a demonstration, is about as wide as this piece of paper, so congratulations for that, I suppose. We asked them about leading pedestrian intervals at light crosswalks. What that means is, for the crosswalk, for about five seconds before the light turns green, the pedestrians get a green to go. There's only one in the city of Lansing right now, which is actually right here at Michigan and Capitol. They said they didn't do any of them because they didn't. They had no reason, they just said they didn't, they didn't put any in. The New York Department of Transportation showed that they can reduce killed and serious, killed or serious accidents for pedestrians by 29.6%. That is almost one-third that can be reduced by just adjusting the timing of the lights, and they just did not pursue it. Finally, every single turn radius on the entire avenue that they're redoing is being set to a minimum of 20 feet, which is enough to accommodate a 56-foot semi-truck. At every single drive, every single turn, that is being done, when the recommended for an urban area is 10. I understand roads where you need trucks to get through, but for every single one, it has issues of increasing accidents by 16.2%, encouraging drivers to go blowing through stop signs and red lights, which is already a great issue on the avenue. And actually, the morning of that meeting at the corner of Green Lawn and Washington Avenue, a cyclist was hit and killed by a car with a turn radius of 20 feet by blowing through the light. I'd like to talk more about it with you guys, if we get the chance, but this needs to be addressed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Carter Brown, followed by Nicholas Zandi.
Good evening, I am Carter Brown, first ward resident. Sorry. I am here again pushing for the city of Lansing to open a 20-hour warming shelter. I know we are currently experiencing a fool's spring, but winter will come back, don't be fooled. And it happens every year, it gets cold and windy every year. Even this week, we have lows in 17-degree weather. I would open any of you to go stand outside for 30 minutes without a $100 coat. It gets cold quickly. And this is something the community supports. If you look on any social media post that has been circulating in the last few months, you will see overwhelming support by the community for this. And a lot of the questions are, where are we going to put it? How are we going to do this? You spent the first hour discussing what to do with this giant building with restrooms and a kitchen and a pharmacy. I've been in a Sam's Club. There is space for people in there, there's a way to make this community work for the people and not for the corporations. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nicholas Zandi, followed by Belinda Fitzpatrick.
I hope this mic is actually working properly. My name is Nicholas Zandi, I am a resident from the second ward. I'm speaking here, I am actually reading off of my notes right here that I've took throughout the meeting, through a lot of problems I've been facing, some silly problems like the name of that airport that was named after a very controversial US president that I need not mention, considering his stance on unions. Now, I want to speak specifically on that vacant space in the city of Lansing, I think it was an old Sam's Club or something, but it's neither here nor there, the fact that you're using it for a storage unit. And I've heard people defend it, saying, oh, our economy's changed so much, what else are we supposed to do with it? Well, I'm like, there's another thing you can use for it. You can use it as a warming center, someone else actually mentioned that. There are many other things you can do in this day and age. And also, another problem is someone mentioned that Lansing's roads are apparently good. Well, I've actually rode the cat bus down to the south side a few times to Mr. Hussein's constituency contact meetings, I've been on President Groveland, and it is bumpy, and it is not something I would call in good condition. And it's clear that we need to really spend more on transportation. And also, people are just evicted, from what I've heard, on a regular basis from time to time. I mean, I'm sure rich people can make it into a drinking game out of their expensive French wines. And also, it was also mentioned by someone else that our city hasn't been the best in terms of pedestrian been the best in terms of pedestrian friendliness, considering that Washington Green Lawn, in which, by the way, I live out there, so I should know, has had a recent accident with a biker and a car, from what I've heard. And since I live around there and I tend to get on the bus for CADA right around there, that definitely personally affects me. And also, the parking lot at Kroger is not very pedestrian-friendly. I have to worry about being run over by a car. And potentially, if there are pedestrians walking through that, there could be lawsuits considering the deaths of family members. And we seriously need to make parking lots in other parts of the city way more pedestrian-friendly, and we need to really solve this issue. And that's all I need to say, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, we have Belinda Fitzpatrick, followed by Jody Washington.
Belinda Fitzpatrick, Post Office Box 24204, Lansing, Michigan 48909. Well, my, one of my wonderful roosters made it to the front page of the Detroit News. So I do know how to get my 15 minutes of fame. But one of the things that concerns me more than the Detroit News is the city palls about 47 houses that are illegally occupied. Well, you know, I still am a lawyer, and I am very convinced that the problem is the civil rights violation. Occupancy is a fundamental right, and like freedom of speech, there should be a clear and present danger before a person is denied a fundamental right. Red tagging, the reason why so many houses are red tagged is because safe homes are being red tagged. These red-tagged properties are safe. I'm living in one of them. I have two houses next to each other. I call it a house and a half because the one is really too small if you didn't have a, it's more like my office with my library. But, um, you know, I feel that my civil rights were violated. I don't believe that my house should have ever been red tagged. I haven't jumped through the hoops to say, oh, come back in and inspect. Do I think my house is safe? Yes, I believe my house is safe. There is no such thing as a 100% safe house, but you know what I think's really going on? I think racketeering. And I'm going to bring this up to the county commission tomorrow because it's the county and the city together that are setting people up to fail, pushing houses into tax foreclosure as my house is threatened to be pushed into tax foreclosure by these red-tagged monitoring fees. This is a serious civil rights violation. And there's court cases right now that say, hey, the county's going to have to exercise its fiduciary duty to the person whose house has been put into tax foreclosure. And, um, I'm going to bring it up to the county tomorrow because I think they need to investigate this, especially since I believe there's one person who really set me up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jody Washington, and then Michael Mercer.
Thank you, Jody Washington. This is my gaudier speaking. I'm not nervous, so excuse me. I wasn't going to say anything, but I want to say thank you, Mayor Shore, and to all of you council members that spoke against the self-storage unit. I am tired of these people coming up and telling us, I'm mortified, nobody wants to do business with this demographic. Who do they think they are? They, nobody has a right to come in and denigrate any part of our city or our people. I get that the people trying to sell the land want their commission. I understand that. It's business for them. This is our home, and we need to treat it as such. And I think the demographics on the south side are strong and good. They are misrepresenting what we are, and they are misrepresenting what's going on in that parking lot. I'm by it all the time. I don't see the drinking, the drugging, the donuts, or anything else going on there. And I'm mortified that anybody would get up here and trash any part of our city the way that they have done. And yet, they want us to welcome them into our community? I think not. I'm proud of our south side. I'm proud of the entire south side. And I think this is, that area is one of the most engaged part of our community we have. And so, when you have 100 and some people showing up to an event saying, no, thank you, we need to listen. So thank you to each and every one of you. Thank you, Mayor Shore, for your comments. I really, really appreciate for you all standing up for us. Maybe if there was something in there that provided jobs, people wouldn't have to sit around and drink.
Could, could I stop you for a second?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, ma'am. I just want for all those out in the, in the TV world, there is an active shooter at Michigan State University right now. So if you are at or near East Lansing, please stay away. If you are in East Lansing, please lock your doors. It's my understanding that our police and police from all over the tri-county area are there and addressing it, so they're on top of it. I apologize for interrupting you, but I want to make sure anybody watching knows.
That's very important. That's very important.
And our police officer may leave.
Yeah. Thank you. Gosh, imagine that didn't even happen on the south side of Lansing. That was inappropriate, I'm sorry. I just, I love our city. I love every part of our city, and I don't like anybody coming in and talking about any of us like that. And I just really quickly wanted to say something about the homeless population. Everybody's talking about these 24-hour warming centers. That's not something that's needed year-round. That's something that's needed for a few months of the year, and I'm hoping through the ad hoc on homelessness that a good strategic plan will be in place. It should be done with the churches, who will be on call, ready to open up, and ready to staff with volunteers. So this isn't something we need, you know, 12 months out of the year. So we have to be wise. But as we go forward, talking about homelessness and shelters, we have a real problem with our transgender, our gay, and our medically fragile homeless people. They are not safe in the shelters, and some of them aren't even accepted in the shelters. So as we go forward, please, let's remember their population also. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Michael Mercer.
Chris? I'm Michael Mercer, 2536 U-Haul. I happen to have watched the morning news during Sunday on the, on the fifth, and hearing that there was going to be a probation out in the East Lansing area at this home that's worth three-quarters of a million dollars. These people who live in these apartments over there on Caesar E. Chavez and Seymour in the fourth ward, they were interviewed with TV 6 and 47 both. They've got so much going on in those apartments, people with needles throwing them out in the hallways, somebody up on the top floor wanted to change his door and put a new deadbolt lock. The owner would not allow him to do it. He texts that, you know, who was renting that apartment up on the top floor not to do it, and he, the owner, or me and the one renting, was willing to buy a door and a new deadbolt and put it in himself temporary until he leaves and put the original one back, but that owner still wouldn't let him do it, which I don't see no problem with that. You just don't want somebody breaking in his apartment during the middle of the night while he's, you know, maybe got a nighttime job. I don't blame him. Anyhow, I'd just like to see something get done to get that, you know, I hate to see what happened over there in Sandy Allen's ward years ago when she was here on council. On Orchard Court, they demolished some of those apartments, and I tell you, I went in there and I saw cockroaches, I saw a lot of stuff in there. I wouldn't even take no chance of living in a place like that. And also, talking about that old Sam's Club, I would like to see maybe another type of a store like they have on the west and the east side and out there in Charlotte, maybe a Walmart. I wouldn't want no darn storage unit. My guy, look at Roller World over there on M. L. Kelly and Holmes Road. That's not a storage unit. That dealership there on that same area, it's not a storage unit. Too many storage units. How about the old RV store out there on Pennsylvania? That's a storage. You don't need no more darned storage units whatsoever. And I guess that's all I got to say.
Hey, Chris, I had submitted a YALG.
Well, I don't have it, but I bet you did, so go ahead.
Back to the Sam's Club U-Haul type of place. I was at the planning board meeting when this was presented initially, and I can tell you that the planning board members at first refused to put the topic on the table. They were not going to even hear it. And then, you know, they were persuaded by Susan Stachowicz, that's how you say her name, that they had to hear it, so then they did. But I'm not sure she was correct in the first place. But secondly, we have an example of having actually done the right thing, and that's with the city market, where we had a long-term delay in waiting for the right proposal to come along. And finally, the right thing did come along, and now we have the shuffle. So, I mean, we have done it once, we can do it again. We don't have to succumb to that same mindset that says, take the first thing that comes along because you're not going to get a better offer. That's, that's garbage, just frankly. Third, the Ferguson family has a long history here of doing all kinds of developments. Mr. Ferguson's getting to a retirement age. Perhaps we could all sit down as a city, the mayor, myself, Mr. Ferguson, Chris, however you say his last name, and talk about them being the developers of a Ferguson family facility that would be a legacy that he would leave to the city in return for all the different developments he's profited from over all these years. We have to look at things from a different standpoint. We have to start stopping, okay, you got to go through a broker to get to a realtor, to get to a big-box store. Look internally. Look at your resources you have here in the city who might be willing to step forward and do something like that. And then lastly, you know me, I listen to the scanner. There's a little bit of vandalism, there's a little bit of drunking in the, in the lot there. It is not significant. It is not substantial. It is not something that's deterring people from going there, being there, working there, or wanting to work there. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, that was our final speaker.
I just want to reiterate the mayor's comments about an active shooter that we have at MSU. Let us keep everyone in our prayers, those that are waiting to hear from loved ones, our officers that are responding at this time, and making sure that we continue to, it's our understanding that Frandor is now locked down as well. So, and the information is, is that everyone is to shelter in place at this time. So with that, let us, again, remember those that are in this particular situation, and we want to thank you all for that. And Mayor, did you have any other comments? All right, with that, we are adjourned.